We're back.
Great work, Chantal. Okay. Deputy City Clerk, please call the role.
All righty. Mayor Newsom?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmembers Verka Godiki?
Here.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Here.
We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each item. Our first, uh, first agenda item today, tonight will be a ceremonial one. It's Public Works Week and we will have a proclamation. I ask that Matt Fabry, our Public Works Director, please come up along his team.
So Matt has joined us virtually, I believe, but can we have all our Public Works staff come on up, guys? I see them all in the crowd. Come on up.
See some of you in yellow and some of you being more incognito. Okay, I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas, public work professionals are the behind the scenes employees who focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital important to our community and their work is essential to the public health, quality of life, safety, well-being of the people of the city of San Mateo. And whereas the city of San Mateo's infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided and maintained without the efforts of our public works professionals. And whereas the city of San Mateo Public Works Division workforce is a diverse, hardworking group of dedicated individuals, including engineers, planners, project managers, supervisors, lead workers, maintenance workers, mechanics, technicians, operators and administrative staff who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our city streets, our storm and sewer mains, our wastewater treatment plant, our public buildings and other infrastructure and structures and facilities essential to the city of San Mateo. And whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, students, business owners and community leaders in the city of San Mateo to understand the vital importance of public works and to support the success of public works programs in our community. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated National Public Works Week since 1960. And it is a pleasure of the city of San Mateo to again join the APWA and recognize and commend all public work professionals in the city of San Mateo and throughout the state of California. And now therefore I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor for the city of San Mateo, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. And I call upon all community members to become familiar with the issues that challenge our public works and to recognize all the ways which public works employees and managers improve our health, safety, comfort and quality of life here in San Mateo. Thank you. So before we come down to present this, does Matt want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. I apologize for not being there in person. I'm unfortunately not feeling well today. But this proclamation is one of the high points for our department each year as the council recognizes National Public Works Week, celebrating the diverse contributions from public works professionals across the country. And so while I'm, I'm the one that gets to accept the proclamation on behalf of the department, it's really thanks to all of our administrative support staff, our business group, our field and facilities maintenance workers, our mechanics, operators and lab staff at the treatment plant, our technicians, planners and project managers and engineers that do the hard work every day to improve the quality of life for San Mateo residents. And so we really appreciate the opportunity to be recognized by the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone want to say? Yeah, sorry. Does anyone else would like to chime in? Anyone else on the council want to say anything? All right, well, let's go down. Okay, please. Councilmember Nash.
I think I can safely say I'm speaking on behalf of the city council in thanking each and every one of you and all of your colleagues. We have seen you work everyday tasks, emergencies. You've always put it aside. You've always concentrated on what's great for the city. And you also work as a team really well. So I'd like to thank all of you and look forward to working with all of you and your colleagues in the next coming year.
I. Thank you for all you guys do and I'm so sorry to make you guys wait a full half hour or 40 minutes. But we're gonna come down and take a photo with all of you. So let's go, guys. All right, moving on on our agenda. Item two. The LGBTQIA+ Commission Proclamation. We are joined by Dana Johnson. Is Dana here online? Oh, Dana's here. Hi Dana. Welcome Dana.
Thank you.
Whereas, the city of San Mateo proclaims the month of June 2025 as Pride Month and honors the LGBTQIA+ individuals who have a measurable impact, the cultural, civic, economic success of our county. And whereas the city of San Mateo honors the history of the American gay rights movement and proclaims respect for LGBTQIA+ activists and allies who fought and continue to fight relentlessly for equality. And whereas Pride Month is a time to celebrate and uplift the LGBTQIA+ community and the city of San Mateo is committed to promoting progress, tolerance, inclusivity and visibility. And whereas on June 14th, we are honored to open our downtown streets to make way for the San Mateo County's Pride Parade. Where our city representatives will walk in solidarity with our LGBTQIA+ community members and organizations. And whereas providing support and safe spaces for the LGBTQIA+ community is imperative, the city of San Mateo is a proud supporter of the San Mateo County Pride Center, which provides direct clinical services, case management services, education, workshops and resources to individuals and families in need. And whereas the city of San Mateo condemns hate in all forms and strives to build society where our citizens are valued and treated with dignity regardless of how they look, how they identify or who they love. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness, provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQIA+ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance and advance equal rights. Now for, therefore, the city of San Mateo hereby recognizes June 2025 as Pride Month in support of the entire LGBTQIA+ community. Be it further resolved that our city council will vote on tonight's meeting to raise a rainbow flag at City Hall on June 2nd. Recognizing all LGBTQIA+ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the city of San Mateo a vibrant community to which, in which to live, work and visit. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we open it up to you to give some comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor Newsom, as well as council. Appreciate it. And I think, thank you to the city manager and all that put the work into this. I'm gonna start and I'm gonna provide my comments with a presentation, a short presentation of educating about the various different LGBTQIA+ entities that we have within our county here. So as shared, I'm Dana Johnson. My pronouns are they, them and he, him. Today's presentation is about the LGBTQIA+ Commission's Inclusion Community Campaign. Next slide, please. So an overview of what I'm going to briefly kind of go over with you is a little bit about the LGBTQIA+ Commission. The various different community serving organizations. A little bit about San Mateo County Pride Celebration that Mayor Newsom shared with you all. And then the Inclusion Community Campaign that the LGBTQIA+ Commission is spearheading to show support to all LGBTQ+ community members within the county and constituents that you may have and how you can support with next steps. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the LGBTQIA+ Commission. We were founded in 2014 by Supervisor Dave Pine. We are an advisory body. You see that's in bold because we really want to highlight advisory. What happens is we meet as a collective group and we come together with things that we can advise the board of supervisors on. And then from there, they would act out on that. We also could support with various different councils if they needed any support with that. But our main, main focus is to be an advisory group for the board of supervisors to make sure that there is inclusion, cultivating a safe space within San Mateo County to be in a welcoming and safe environment. We are all appointed, so we sit and we come and we fill out the application of interest for the commission. And then we go through an interview process and then we are appointed by our board of supervisor liaison at that point. Then we come together. We meet every third Tuesday of the month, 6:30 to 8:30 on various different topics of how we can better support the community. You see here, we have our current commissioners. Supervisor Corzo is now our board of supervisor liaison. And she usually have a member of her team that comes to our meetings. And then you have our various different commissioners. There's about eight or nine of us, including Tanya Beat, who is our LGBTQIA+ Commission staff. Next slide, please. A little bit of things that we do do as a commission. I was sharing that we are advisory and here's some accomplishments and recommendations that we've given to the board of supervisors. SB 59, Protection of Privacy. SB 107, Gender Affirming Healthcare, Gender Inclusive Language Resolution. Colorado Amicus Brief in 2018. Mental Health Service Act Support, a catalyst for the Start of Coast Pride, who is over in Half Moon Bay. Really supporting to try to bring more LGBTQ services, what would be called across the bridge to make sure that they are also receiving support. And then also catalyst for the SMC transgender policy for all employees that are county employees within the county of San Mateo. There is a transgender policy of support for them. And then there's a countywide survey of LGBTQ wellness that we kind of helped support and spearheading in 2017. Key initiatives are Inclusion Community Campaign, which is what I will share with you a little bit more deeply about. Pride Visibility Project, doing some support around Transgender Day of Remembrance as well as Transgender Day of Visibility, which we did a very nice collaborative celebration with the San Mateo County Pride Center. Collaborating with other partnerships and then uplifting inclusion for the LGBTQIA+ Commission to make that change and continue to make that change. Next slide, please. So the reason I said that there are various different organizations because sometimes what we have learned and that a lot of times when we're having conversations with community or various different dignitaries, they tend to overlap the services that each type of organization has. So I shared LGBTQIA Commission, that's one entity. That entity is an advisory board. You then have the San Mateo County Pride Center. We kind of call it the one stop shop for LGBTQ+ support. So if there is a community member that is in need of a peer group, if there is someone in need of a clinical support, if there is in need of some type of a community family or they're going through any type of trauma or crisis, we would just engage them to go to the San Mateo County Pride Center. The commission doesn't so much do that. What we would do is kind of advise and kind of coach and support for folks to go to here. The Pride Center is mainly who will be doing all those type of supports. So they're your one stop shop for all support that maybe a community member may need direct support or services with. Also supporting youth groups as well, doing a lot of education on how you can be more supportive to let's say trans, non-binary identifying groups as well as educating on pronouns. Next slide, please. I shared with you that we helped Coast Pride with starting. Coast Pride has now been up and going for about six years. They are the LGBTQIA+ center that's over in Half Moon Bay, kind of supporting more of those in the coast. We collaborate with them as well and let's say that there was a community member that needed some support that when they were more in the coast, we would go ahead and we would connect them to Coast Pride, which is a different entity. Still supporting LGBTQIA+ community members, but more of focusing on those in the coast. I know there's also been some work in collaboration with trying to help support LGBTQIA+ identifying farmers and how they can also be supported. I know because I'm a board member for Coast Pride too. So that's how I know that information. Next slide, please. Then you have the San Mateo County Pride Initiative, which I'm a co-chair of the San Mateo County Pride Initiative, which is a health equity initiative. This is probably what is known as your longest kind of servicing LGBTQIA+ community support within the county. It was founded in 2007 by the Office of Diversity and Equity under BHRS, Behavioral Health Recovery Services. There was mainly started to be a group of clinicians that wanted to support staff that were identifying as LGBTQIA+. And then they opened up to do more of community wellness, a community type of healing and support and resources. And that's where you get the whole umbrella of the Pride Initiative in which you're providing a lot of support for those that are staff. But then you're also welcoming that inclusive environment for community members that may need the support. Some of our community members are also consumers. And we try to make it like it's one big connected collaborative community to where we are also getting conversation from our community and having them as being part of maybe the everyday steps of how they can get better care. Some of our community members and consumers come to our Pride Initiative meetings, which is every second Wednesday of the month from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Some of them also come to our Pride Planning Meeting. So we really through this umbrella is really circled around how we can connect and do wellness for the community. Next slide, please. Pride Celebration. We heard Mayor Newsom talking about that. We seen a lot of cheers for that. It was a great time last year and we're looking for even a more amazing time this year. So I invite you all, if you are listening to, to come on out, cheer on some Pride Goers or you can walk in the contingent of yourself for the Pride Parade. It's starting on Second and B Street and it will end at Central Park, on the corner of Central Park in a nice, larger space. So we're thankful for that. On East Fifth Avenue. Please, please come out. It is a free event. It is a sober event. I would say we are the driest event in regards of Pride Celebration. The longest driest one in the Bay Area or in California, actually. So I'm very happy to hear that. We also are very, very family oriented and it's a very good family space. So you'll see a lot of families out engaging and maybe even having their pet out with them as well, connecting there. So it's a very good family space. And we talk about it a lot that it's one of the largest probably events that probably countywide that we have. Last year, we had about 6,000 people in attendance for this. So we're looking at having more and with the climate and the environment of things now for community, it's more than ever that we would need like ally support. And you know, having you there to be there to let your constituents know that, you know, they're seen, they're heard and they're safe. So we went with a theme of breaking boundaries and trying to reset like the whole boundary of conversation of what that looks like. So this is what you see here. The parade starts at 10:30 AM and then the celebration is 11:05. If you are interested, smcpridecelebration.com would be the website. Or there's a QR code that takes you directly to that website. And the next slide. Inclusion Community Campaign. This is a campaign I was sharing with you. If you go ahead and navigate, it should show the various different bullets of what we have here for the campaign. The visibility is a year-round project. So we launched it in April 17th, 2025. And what we did is we recruited volunteers to advocate for LGBTQIA+ folks. We also have bi-monthly trainings that we're trying to give to community members so that they can feel confident and empowered to where they can come to the council meetings themselves and talk about the importance of LGBTQ advocacy and inclusion in the county. And we also give a free signup for folks that may be within the county. Um, and we also give a free sign up for folks that may be within the county that is really interested in coming out for that. Next slide, please. Our next steps here, again, as I shared, come on out, join us for SMC Pride Parade and attend the Pride Celebration on June fourteenth, um ten thirty AM to about five PM. We ask that you please promote the Pride Parade and Celebration. Um, you may see it in like the various different social media outlets, like a newspaper called Daily Journal, um maybe kind of target people around that is coming out to try to get more folks there to know that that's a safe space for them. Um, we ask if you can sponsor, we do have sponsorships. Um, probably shouldn't talk very much about financials, but you can't put on something like this without finances and without donors and sponsorships. So if you are interested, that also has some information there on the website. And then uh thank you for the proclamation. Uh, what we kind of done is kind of asked all the various different city councils within the county if they can as well raise the progressive pride flag and then also looking to get in a proclamation. So it's been pretty well the last few years, and we're hoping that we could continue with that.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Dana.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna come down and take a photo with you.
Sounds good.
For our next ceremonial item, we have a proclamation for Mental Health Month, and I invite Walter Ing from the Community Engagement Supervisor of Star Vista Crisis Center to come forward. Whereas in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, twelve and a half percent of San Mateo County adults likely had serious psychological distress in the past year, and San Mateo County youth grade seven, nine, and eleven reported social emotional distress, twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-two percent respectively in the past twelve months. And whereas every day, millions of people face stigma related to mental health and substance use conditions and may feel isolated and alone going years before receiving any help if left untreated, have life execencies twenty-five years shorter than the general population. And whereas, while mental health conditions are common across all types of demographics, certain communities face inequitable access to services, including people of color, the LGBTQIA+ community, youth uh and older adults. And whereas, mental health and substance use conditions are treatable health conditions, and people who have mental health and substance abuse conditions can recover and lead full and meaningful lives. And whereas, San Mateo residents have access to many behavioral health services at no cost, San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, BHRS, and its contracted network service of providers offer the full spectrum of directed services and specialized supports, early intervention, crisis support, and prevention. Star Vista Crisis Service offers for crisis intervention, including a twenty-four-seven crisis hotline, six five oh five seven nine zero three five zero, prevention services, and suicide prevention services. And whereas, the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Recovery Services, Star Vista, and the San Mateo County Mental Health Month Planning Committee and partners are collectively organizing activities that San Mateo County community members can participate in throughout the month, including free in-person and virtual events, advocacy days, and social media campaigns. The twenty twenty-five theme is Mental Health is a Continuum. Ongoing updates posted at www.smchealth.org/mhM. And whereas, San Mateo City Council wishes to increase the public's knowledge of signs and symptoms of mental health and substance use conditions, professional and self-help resources, and self-care practices. And now therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor for the city of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire city council, to hereby recognize May twenty twenty-five as Mental Health Month in San Mateo, to enhance public awareness of mental health and to help end the stigma and direct members of the community to resources and support for mental health and substance use conditions. Congratulations, Mental Health Month.
So I have a few statements to read out for a second. So good evening, Mayor, council members, city managers, staff, and residents of the city of San Mateo. My name is Walter Ing. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm the Star Vista Crisis Center Community Engagement Supervisor. The Crisis Center operates a twenty-four-seven crisis intervention and suicide prevention hotline, handling calls, texts, and chats from both local and national sources supporting the mental health of San Mateo County residents. Our crisis counselors provide immediate support, conduct suicide risk assessments, develop plans to keep people safe, and offer compassionate connections. Additionally, the Crisis Center facilitates mental health and suicide profession presentations, as well as post-crisis interventions with local school districts, nonprofit organizations, as local government agencies, and community-based organizations. These services aim to raise mental health awareness and foster resilience and support through our county. Thank you to the city of San Mateo for proclaiming May twenty twenty-five as May Mental Health Month, and it is observed across San Mateo County, California, and the United States. Mental health is an essential to a person's life the same way as physical health. Hesitation to talk about mental health adds to the notion that the topic is forbidden. It is important to normalize conversations around mental health so people can feel empowered to seek the help that they need. Lime green is the national color for national for mental health and represents how we want to bring a light to an important issue that may be hidden or seen negatively. Mental Health Month is a key opportunity time to again reduce stigma, connect people to services, and promote wellness for mental health and substance use conditions. Again, for San Mateo County and Southern California, the twenty twenty-five May Mental Health Month theme is Mental Health as a Continuum. This theme challenges the binary idea of healthy versus unhealthy mental health, normalizing the wide range of mental health experiences, encouraging individuals to embrace and accept the full spectrum of their well-being. Mental Health Month is important to me because as someone who guides the discussions, especially in schools, I see firsthand the profound effects of mental health and the resources that are available in the schools, and how it touches the lives of everyday individuals as well, both aging adults, seniors, LGBTQIA+. And that I see the struggles, I see the resilience, but I also see the coping skills that they're building and all the knowledge and resources that is available in San Mateo County. So starting today, I invite everyone to take action on one of the following options. Number one, wear a lime green ribbon either on your social media account or on your clothing. That way creates a conversation for people who see that color and ask you what that means. Number two, learn more about mental health resources available to you by visiting nine eight eight lifeline dot org or samateocrisis.org. And number three, attend or host a mental health awareness event in your community. Once again, thank you so much for your time, and thank you to the city of San Mateo for recognizing May as Mental Health Month.
You said it.
Thank you so much, Walter. We're gonna come down and take a picture with you. Our next ceremonial agenda item has actually been postponed. Before we continue, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that the proclamation honoring Lou Cohen will be rescheduled at the request of staff. We also extend the deepest condolences to Lou and his family, as his mother has recently passed away. Our thoughts are with them during this difficult time. Okay. We'll now move on to our next item, which is the Consent Calendar. We're moving beyond the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting, which includes the business items being considered before the council. For that reason, I would like to remind the room and all online that we will be enforcing our rules of decorum. As such, we do not allow for cheering, jeering, or booing during the business portion of the meeting, as this tends to put a chill on public comment. Our goal is to ensure that all perspectives are heard. Our motto is to give respect and get respect. We appreciate your cooperation with this. Deputy City Clerk, please read the Consent Calendar.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number five, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number six, LGBTQIA+ Progress Pride Flag Display at City Hall Adoption. Item number seven, Twenty-Nine Bay Three Way and Twenty-Second DeSablet Road Final Parcel Map Approval. Item number eight, Metropolitan Transportation Commission Transit Oriented Communities Policy Grant Adoption. Item number nine, Fleet Maintenance Services Agreement Approval. Item number ten, Wastewater Treatment Plan Digestor Second Coating Project Agreement. Item number eleven, East San Mateo Sanitary Sewer Lift Station Rehabilitation Project Amendment. Item number twelve, On-Call Professional Consultant Services Agreement Amendment. Item number thirteen, Twenty Twenty-Five Annual Investment Policy Approval. Item number fourteen, Citywide Curb Painting AB Four Thirteen Red Zones Markers, Delineators, and Stripping Services Amendment. Item number fifteen, Two Thousand South Delaware Affordable Housing Development Agreements. And finally, item number sixteen, Investment Advisory Services Agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Deputy Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? No. If any members of the public who wish to comment on any of the Consent Calendar items, now will be the time to make your comment. This is public comment for Consent Calendar items only.
Mayor Newsom, we have one request to speak in our virtual environment with Allison McQueen.
Okay, we'll go ahead.
Per uh rules and procedures, the speaker will have three minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Allison, please unmute your mic.
Hi, good evening, City Council. Thank you for keeping um item number fourteen on the Consent Calendar, which is the contract for striping to get our city in compliance with state law AB Four Thirteen, which protects the safety of pedestrians and cyclists known as daylighting. It says in the contract amendment that intersections will be prioritized around schools, parks, commercial areas, and other high priority locations. My ask of you and city staff is that daylighting around schools be prioritized first this summer before school begins in mid-August. Getting the schools work completed ASAP will ensure that schools start safe in the fall from day one. The beginning of the school year is a resetting of norms around schools, how to drop off, pick up, and how a family decides to get to and from school. The beginning of the school year is a great time for our school districts, principals, and PTAs to amplify the city's messaging that the new red curbs help make our roads safer for those walking and biking. The city should proactively communicate with our local elementary, middle, and high school districts and private schools so that this opportunity to highlight important safety work and the why is not lost in the shuffle. Thank you for supporting Safe Streets for everyone in San Mateo, especially our students who need your support immediately so they can get to school safely starting next school
Thank you. Our next and last speaker, Peyton. Please unmute your mic. Peyton Kendron.
Sorry, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, hi there. So I was hoping to actually ask for um, I was wanting to see if the city would actually award uh me, I I work with the organization, it's called Mawa, We Are Making America White Again, and essentially we're wanting awards uh to be granted out to us essentially to to enact uh deep.
Thank you. That's, that's all we have for today.
Okay. Want me to read the script? Sure. I have to find it. There it is, sorry. Okay. "We in the city of San Mateo condemn hateful, anti-Semitic, Islamophobic, and racist speech in the strongest possible terms. At a time of rising antisemitism and hate speech, we do not stand for it. Hate speech can have real consequences. The coun- the country has had numerous mass shootings, including the Atlanta Spa shootings of twenty twenty-one and the Buffalo supermarket shootings of twenty twenty-two. We embrace the rights of all individuals in our community to be who they are in terms of their sexuality, gender, religious orientation, and beliefs, and we will always do so." So with that, I will close public comment. Lost my place. And open it up to comments from the council.
We need to make a motion for the Consent Calendar?
I'm motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sverka Godiky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Public comment, members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking actions on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to to staff for follow-up. This public comment set section is generally limited to a total of fifteen minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Ms. Clerk, can you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. Right now, I have five requests to speak in chambers. If anyone in our virtual environment wants to speak in general public comment, please raise your hand now. Okay, we have a total of five speakers, three minutes per speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Gonna start with uh Michael Sevilla. When I call your name, please um just stand to my right. Michael Sevilla, Andrew Reback, and Andrew Ryan.
Good evening. Current San Mateo resident and San Mateo business owner since nineteen eighty-nine. Back again to talk about ending the fourteen-day reservation window for VIP membership program at Poplar Creek Golf Course. I attended the park and rec meeting on May seventh, where the San Mateo Municipal Golf Course staff presented a plan to return some of what was lost by San Mateo residents almost four years ago. This is supposed to occur when the restaurant and event sent event space reopen. No date was given for that. It has been closed for many months. I and the hundred and eighteen people who have signed the petition to end the fourteen-day reservation window for the VIP can't wait anymore. I still have not found anything about this in the city charter or municipal code. Is this a policy that could extend to other municipal facilities? The amount of money being lost because of the restaurant and event space closing is so much greater than what is so much greater than what is being made from the VIP program. Could the San Mateo Municipal Golf Course staff work on neglected facilities maintenance instead of making it difficult for residents to access the facility? I ask, please, end the reservation window, 14-day reservation window for VIP membership program. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Reback, followed by Andrew Ryan, and our last speaker in chambers will be Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Andrew Reback, 805 Highland Avenue, San Mateo. I live across the city near our main library, but today I'd like to talk about the Marina Branch, which serves the Parkside neighborhood, an area with fewer public amenities and walkable options than other parts of the city. Since this isn't my usual library, I've only just recently learned that it was being closed for 18 months for renovations. While I support that investment, as all city investments, you know, I'm a huge supporter of parks and libraries and everything else that we do, I'm concerned and a little disappointed that there's no plan for interim library access in a part of the city. It's a real problem. It's not just about my own son, who's here with us today, ready to go home as soon as I'm done here, a Parkside Elementary student who is planning on walking to the library after school to read and use the 3D printers, but it's also about the dozens of other kids who go there on a regular basis. Seniors, families who rely on the library not just for books, but for Wi-Fi, printing, job searches, and after-school programs. When I inquired, and I hope my information is wrong in this case, I was told that there's no budget for temporary space, but we're talking about 18 months of modest scaled-back service, potentially just a reading room, some computers, and study space. I think San Mateo is close to 24% vacancy rate, retail of about 5%, but I think most of you are familiar with the area. We have the old Fish Market, the old Office Depot, Specialties Cafe, a lot of vacant space around there that could be used for short-term possible use for a library. Other cities do this, pop-up libraries, mobile units. You know, every Halloween, the Spirit Store somehow finds a way of getting real estate on a very short-term basis, and they figure it out. Surely, a city of 100,000 people, staff of 500, and a budget exceeding $200 million can find some money to get at least core library services in that neighborhood for an interim period. And I hope we don't let this community go without, the children of Parkside, working parents and seniors deserve better, and I hope we don't call having no plan the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Ryan, and Lori Heater, you're our last speaker in the virtual environment. Mr. Next, Frank Elliott, you're next.
Hi, my fellow citizens and honorable councilmembers, no matter which side of the historic preservation debate you're on, you should be extremely concerned about the city of San Mateo's carelessness in its administration of Mills Act contracts and the size of the giveaways to wealthy homeowners. According to the county assessor's office, the city of San Mateo is currently providing two homeowners with $52,000 a year in property tax subsidies just because they own historic homes. That's obscene, especially when our city is in a budget deficit. On top of this, the city has been unable to provide evidence of a single one of its contractually mandated inspections of these homes having occurred over a 30-year period. Even our friends at the Heritage Alliance should be deeply troubled because we have no proof the homes we are massively subsidizing are even being kept up in a historic manner. I'm asking the city council to cancel these Mills Act contracts and direct the planning department to begin correcting its enforcement mistakes. The problems I've identified here, along with the inconsistencies in Glazenwood that I noted last meeting, are prime examples of why the city should not expand its historic resources program and should cancel or severely curtail the RINCON contract. Our city government is having trouble keeping track of this program consisting of two properties. So how will we enact an expanded citywide historic resources program without a significant increase in budget and staff? Is this really where the city wants to be spending its money, especially when we're facing this massive budget deficit? What are the true hidden costs, and who is really getting the benefits? Council, it's time to start asking these hard questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Frank Elliott, followed by Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and fellow citizens. June 2nd, council will be revisiting the coming local historic process, which is advertised as a $500,000 one-time expense that will create no new districts and no significant burden on staff. I'm nervous about this promise. Doesn't it seem a more robust local process will lead to more historic applications, increased staff reviews, more tracking of properties, and consequently more downstream costs? How can it not? For example, buried in the fine print, the RINCON spoke of work calls for permanent historic commission. Do we need another commission? Will that be free to the city? I'm going to pass this out because it details that commission that is proposed. Originally, this RINCON project was expedited to discourage a bypass of a local process. That didn't work. We're being bypassed. Even though significant effort has been made by staff, and I defer to staff and council on this because obviously if we spent $400,000, it probably makes no sense to stop, but given we're not going to stop this bypass, I ask that you consider, or staff, consider a pivot. Please reexamine, scale back, or even consider canceling RINCON's contract. Some questions you might want to ask: what specific problems are our current preservation ordinances causing that need immediate fixing? I don't think there's a good answer to that. And then also, what concrete issues does the RINCON project solve? And what measurable return on investment will it deliver? These are really, I don't, I'm not saying I've got the answers, I think you've got a lot on your plate, and it's complicated. We owe it to our taxpayers to ensure every dollar is spent wisely. Let's press staff for a more robust explanation when this comes back in June 2nd, and be prepared to halt or reshape this process if it no longer makes sense or serves our community's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Rick Bonilla, followed by Lori Heater.
Thank you very much. So having heard what we heard and read what I just read, I really strongly urge you to, and I want to let you know, I agree with what Andrew Ryan and Frank are saying. I'm outraged, and I think we need to direct staff to conduct an investigation of this starting immediately, and we need to, as soon as we get the findings, announce them publicly and have a hearing on them, and we need to decide what to do about this. Further, I do urge the ending of the RINCON contract. I don't see any benefit coming from that. I see negative impacts coming from that. I feel pain for the people of the city of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lori Heater. Lori, please unmute your mic.
Hi, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to respond to the previous comments, which are sort of on the fly. I think there are a number of points that need to be addressed. I agree that the city is in a huge deficit and should be looking at a line item by line item budget to see what we really need to do. In regards to the historic preservation ordinance, this is a commitment and an obligation and a goal of the city, and to address the historic resources in San Mateo that have, it has been in multiple general plans, and this work has not been done. This is about complying with the general plan that hasn't been done, and I'm not sure why, when historic resource preservation is a goal and an obligation of local, state, and federal resources projects, that these people are so vehemently opposed. We should ask, what development project do they want to do that this historic preservation ordinance might curtail? And if they have a project, go ahead and propose it before the ordinance gets updated. But I think historic preservation has been a goal of the city, and it's something that has been ignored. The project is not 500,000, it's 330,000, including the contingency, so I'm not sure what the previous speakers are concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment.
We'll now move on to the public hearing part of our presentation or of our council meeting. Item 17, Downtown Business Improvement Area Annual Renewal. We need a break. We're going to take a-
Five minutes?
Five-minute recess, and then we'll continue with item 17. Thank you. All right. Up next, public hearing, Downtown Business Improvement Area Annual Renewal. We'll have a presentation by Jennifer Chen, our Economic Development Manager, and Mackenzie Jacobic, our Executive Director of the DSMA. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening, council. The item in front of you tonight is a public hearing for the annual renewal of the Downtown Business Improvement Area. At the last meeting, city council accepted the Downtown Business Improvement Area Annual Report, adopted a resolution of intent to levy the DBIA assessments, and scheduled a public hearing for tonight. The Executive Director of the Downtown San Mateo Association will now present highlights and key efforts from the past year, respond to any questions from city council, and council is asked to adopt a resolution levying the annual DBIA assessments for the upcoming fiscal And now Mackenzie Jacobic, the Executive Director, will make the presentation.
My name is Mackenzie Jacobic. I'm the Executive Director for the Downtown San Mateo Association. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Downtown San Mateo Association's annual report. It's been a rewarding second year for me personally, and I- and I am proud to share the organization's accomplishments and our plans for the year ahead. Next slide. I want to start off by sharing some thoughts from community members and business owners. I just collected a few from social media. Thank you for organizing fun community events like these. They make San Mateo a wonderful place to live. I love the newsletter. The information is seriously helpful. Hey, me and my partner just moved to San Mateo. This page has been really helpful. The B Street pedestrian corridor is one of my favorite things about this town. Thanks for always hosting events. And it's so awesome that folks are putting much more thought into the programming on B Street. My partner and I are moving closer to downtown. Looking forward to being able to attend more of these events casually. Next slide. Next, we have from Kathy Tao, who owns Florian Orthodontics. I reside in San Mateo and have participated in events organized by the Downtown San Mateo Association, both as an individual as well as a business sponsor. I really love the events and how it brings the community together. Next slide. And finally, DSMA has also supported my business since its launch at the end of last year. Oh, I'm sorry. This is from Dr. Justin Hones, the cupping box. Launched at the end of last year, and I would not be able to have my business operating at the capacity that it is without DSMA's support. DSMA is more than just an association. They are part of the community that brings value to the San Mateo area. Love that one. Next slide, please. Downtown San Mateo continues to thrive as a regional destination for both business and leisure, particularly for visitors from across the peninsula. Our district boasts a rich mix of industries, from tech to wellness to retail, and we are proud to be a foodie's paradise, with food and drink establishments making up about 20% of our businesses. In a recent San Mateo Association survey conducted by True North Research, 12% of residents listed downtown as their favorite part of living here. Next slide. According to Placer AI, it's a company that provides location intelligence and foot traffic insights. Foot traffic to the B Street pedestrian mall has increased about 19% compared to last year. And compared to two years ago, we have an increase of 121%. Next slide. Since 1986, the City of San Mateo City Council has directed the DSMA to manage the Downtown Business Improvement Area, supporting merchants and nurturing community connections. In 2022, City Council approved updated assessments for our Business Improvement District, which went into effect July 2023. That change aimed to not only increase the funding, but also make the assessments more equitable across our diverse businesses. The change has been instrumental in our success over the past two years. Thank you for that. The DSMA Board is made up of dedicated business and community leaders who volunteer their time and expertise. This year, we said farewell to Martin Kent and Tyson Mao, and we warmly welcomed Gillian Thomas from Mills Peninsula Medical Center. Next slide. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize Lou Cohen, owner of B Street Books and longtime DSMA Board President. As Lou prepares to open his new storefront in Burlingame, we thank him for his extraordinary leadership and lasting impact on downtown San Mateo. He couldn't be here tonight, but Lou, if you are watching, thank you for everything. Next slide. Our work at DSMA centers around three main focus areas. Community engagement, creating a vibrant downtown experience through events and marketing; member engagement, supporting the businesses in our district; and civic partnership, working closely with the city and civic organizations to keep downtown clean, safe, and welcoming. Next slide. Starting off with community engagement. This fiscal year, we've hosted, supported, and participated in more than 20 events in downtown San Mateo. From large-scale events like Booze on B Street to smaller pop-ups like A Kiss and a Song, these events not only bring joy to our community, but also drive foot traffic to businesses and reinforce the identity of downtown as a gathering place. Next slide. Consistent, fun, and informative posting to social media has been instrumental in keeping downtown San Mateo in the conversation. Our newsletter to community members keeps them in the loop about store openings, specials, and events. Working with our wonderful volunteer who is here tonight, Amy Lee, we've been able to make improvements to our website and better gauge our efforts through Google Analytics and similar tools. Next slide. Offline, we continue to distribute restaurant guides at events, regional hotels, and in downtown business storefronts. We also advertised at San Mateo on Ice this year in Central Park, which led to a 20% increase in traffic to our online restaurant guide. And one other project that was new for me was we worked with the Palo Alto Daily Post on advertisements for Head West event in order to broaden our reach. Next slide. Downtown San Mateo also saw some media coverage in the Greater Bay Area, including this outstanding piece from the San Francisco Chronicle in March. When discussing B Street, culture critic Peter Hartlau writes, "It manages to preserve touchstones of the past, but smartly embraces modern street design that encourages pedestrians to gather and enjoy the space." Next. The DSMA strives to engage with our members and add value for the many types of businesses downtown. Here are just a few ways we engaged with the businesses this past year. We handed out welcome packets to new businesses, introducing them to the services and help DSMA can provide; offered marketing and other support for events and promotions by individual businesses; we continued collaboration and open communication with the North B Merchants; we highlighted locally owned businesses through our Shop Small to Win Big campaign this past November. It was a collaboration with the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, and we produced eight short-form videos to help the community better understand what it means to be a small business owner in San Mateo. And we email monthly newsletters to our members, sharing information and updates about the district. Through these efforts, we strengthened trust, boosted visibility for local businesses, and made it easier for merchants to connect with resources. Next slide. Here is a postcard from our Shop Small to Win Big. Next. Our success is deeply tied to the city's support. From Public Works to Parks and Rec to the Police Department, we're grateful for the strong and responsive partnership that makes downtown cleaner, safer, and more welcoming. I need to specifically shout out the City Manager's Office, who are a consistent source of support. Daily sometimes, thank you. Keeping downtown clean is a shared effort. DSMA pays for cleaning surfaces in downtown seven days a week, and this year, we added supplemental power washing. We continue to act as a liaison between the city or other civic entities and our merchants. Our monthly board meetings have provided opportunities to effectively share information on everything, from tips on trash service to updates from the police, downtown police unit, to the benefits of hiring seniors. Next slide. I've already touched on many of the goals from this past fiscal year. Our near-term priority is securing a CPA or firm to conduct a financial review. It's an important step in keeping DSMA's finances transparent. For fiscal year 2526, we plan to continue all the work we've been doing this year to keep downtown San Mateo attractive and vibrant. And looking to the further out future of downtown San Mateo, I am very excited this next year to participate in supporting the city's downtown-specific plan. The Board and I will be exploring financial sustainability for the DSMA in the coming months. There are a number of options for incrementally increasing our revenue, and we will find what makes the most sense for us. Next slide. Onto finances. Revenue for fiscal year 2425 consisted primarily of assessments with a small amount from sponsorships. Since assessment rates will be the same for fiscal year 2526, we expect revenue to remain just about flat. Our largest expenses this year were payroll and admin, cleaning efforts, marketing, and events. We expect that to remain the same for the next fiscal year. And it's very important to the Board and to myself that we spend the DSMA funds strategically. I want to give an extra thank you to the City of San Mateo for allowing me to use a shared office space with the Downtown Coordinator Lance Hall. Not only has this allowed DSMA to put more money into programming, but it also has made collaboration with the city even easier. To close out the presentation, I want to show just a few more photos highlighting the fun we've had in downtown San Mateo over the past 12 months. The Downtown San Mateo Association is proud to help foster a district that's vibrant, resilient, and welcoming to all. We look forward to continuing this work hand-in-hand with the city and our community. Thank you for your continued partnership and for considering the resolution. I'm happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we do that, we will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment on this matter?
Yes, Mayor Newsom, we have five requests to speak in chambers. If you are participating virtually and wish to speak on item 17, please raise your hand now. We have five requests to speak with Lori, six requests to speak with Rick Bonilla as our last speaker. No additional requests will be taken after Rick Bonilla. Our first
Through the mayor? Sorry. Given that we're running so late, can we please set public comment to two minutes each?
I hate to do that to Rick again, but sure. Sorry, Rick.
Okay, two minutes. Our first speaker will be Kathy Levitt, followed by Amy Lee and Robert Anderson.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Levitt. I'm the Branch Manager of Tri-County's Bank, and we're on Third Avenue in the downtown area. And we have benefited greatly from the Downtown San Mateo Association. While we're a bank that's open Monday through Friday, nine to five, we've been able to take part in events to capture the weekenders and to capture the evening people who come downtown. Just recently, we sponsored a table during Boba Day, which is a probably a renowned great celebration in downtown San Mateo. We had a table there. We were giving out giveaways. It was an opportunity to reach thousands of people outside of San Mateo. So we really appreciated that. And I did, in fact, get a couple of referrals from that event. So it benefited me greatly, and I'm so happy, and we'll plan to do more of that. So it does allow businesses who are not open on the weekends to somehow partake in the weekend crowds. Also, I just wanted to mention that there were Christmas carolers outside in front of our bank on a Friday evening, and it was posted on Instagram. So I didn't ask for it. It just happened. And it was, I was just so heartwarming when I saw the Christmas carolers out there singing and then posted on Instagram for many people to view. That was fun. And then just also Booze on B Street is an event on the weekend where I open up my doors. The branch is actually closed to transactions. But B Street, there's a ton of people down there, and sometimes the kids just need a place to relax, and we have a restroom. So we bring the kids in. We have coloring activities. We play games. And people who just want to take a break from all the activity down on B Street get a chance to come through the branch. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amy Lee. If I call your name, please line up to my right, followed by Robert Anderson, Erica Wood, and Lori Morales.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, City Council members. Thank you. My name is Amy Lee, and I'm not a downtown business owner, yet. But I am a resident, and I volunteer with Mackenzie for the DSMA. And I just have some perspectives about some recent experiences that I've had with the downtown events. As a longtime visitor to downtown, I've always thought of downtown as a place to go to, which is fun. You know, we have a wonderful park. We have chili cook-off. But now I've been starting to think of downtown as a place to be. And I think that's an interesting mind shift. For instance, on Sunday, I went to my usual coffee. You know, we go walking down, and we grab some coffee, and we sit along the street. And I realized it was the Head West Market. And so I stayed like an extra hour shopping and talking with people. I bought a few cute cards. I looked at planters. I went shopping on the North B side as well, because I was just down there, and I'm like, oh, I need some more hot sauce. Let me go up and hit the markets. And so I've been thinking differently about downtown because of this. And on Boba Day, I went to new Boba Tea restaurants around the city, not just on B Street, but like around the city, because now I had this wonderful map, and I could look at it on my phone, and there were great deals. So now I'm being toured around the city in new ways. And so I just wanted to mention that there's many more reasons, and I think Mackenzie's doing an excellent job. Not just because I like working with you, but also because it's bringing a sense of vibrancy and community to our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Anderson, followed by Erica Wood.
Good evening. I'm Robert Anderson. I'm happy to be here tonight. Just to be transparent, I'm a board member of the Downtown San Mateo Association, also former president of the Downtown San Mateo Association. So I know the association. I think it is a grassroots organization. What we really have in downtown is small business owners. And one of the highlights of working with the business owners is getting to know them. And also, the Downtown San Mateo Association, as Mackenzie articulated in her presentation, has many ways to support the downtown business owners and restaurant owners through the restaurant guide, through marketing, through bringing events downtown. And also, the people who come to downtown San Mateo really want to come to a place that's clean and safe. And it is thanks to our partnership with the city. I just want to real briefly highlight how important the partnership is with the City of San Mateo. We have a great relationship with the City Manager's Office. We also partner with Parks and Rec, a wonderful group to partner with. The Police Department, needless to say, has downtown officers. We know them, they're first-rate. And also, earlier tonight, we're honoring Public Works. Well, we work with Public Works a lot. They get things done in downtown, and we really appreciate their hard work. And most importantly, I want to thank the City Council. I see all five members downtown at DSMA-sponsored events, and we really appreciate you coming to downtown and participating. So in conclusion, I do support the annual renewal of assessments for the Downtown Business Improvement Area. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Erica Wood, followed by Lori Morales and Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, Council, city staff, and members of the community. My name is Erica Wood. I'm the CEO of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, and I enthusiastically support the resolution. And I want to recognize the absolutely excellent work of the Downtown San Mateo Association. The Chamber is proud to be a business downtown, and it is incredibly exciting to see this council's commitment to creating a vibrant downtown becoming a reality. From the amazing array of events and increased foot traffic to the beautiful new banners on North B Street, and I know banners are a big deal, to the wave of ribbon-cutting ceremonies celebrating new business owners. Thank you, Council, for supporting those ribbon cuttings. It's really clear that good things are happening downtown, and it is becoming a destination for visitors, for residents, and businesses alike. And we're not just the ones noticing it. The progress is being echoed by feedback from community in our downtown survey. We're seeing incredible regional media coverage. And even Santa Cruz, my old stomping grounds is calling, asking to learn about our experiences. So that's really great. I just commend the city, all the departments involved. And I want to give a special thanks and shout out to Mackenzie, to Lou, to Kathy, and all the members of the Downtown Association Board for their leadership, their dedication, and hard work. We are honored to partner with the DSMA, and we look forward to more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Lori Morales, followed by Rick Bonilla.
Good evening, City Council. I Sorry. We're, well, I represent downtown business in San Mateo. We've been in San Mateo for over 30 years. And even though we've been there for a very long time, what the DSMA has done for us is that it's made us more visible. So one is, I'm also a DSMA board member, so I can be a voice to that North B part of town, which is very important to us, because often we are kind of to the side. But with, you know, with because often we are kind of to the side. But with, you know, with some representation and with someone that's there regularly at meetings, it helps to make us more visible in different ways. So in the last two years, Go San Mateo created a pretty fantastic little video about our little business that was probably, you know, seen by a lot of people and makes us very proud. And with also the DSMA for this year, you know, putting a little light on North B with new banners. It just creates just a more visible place and part of downtown that. So we are very proud to be in San Mateo and that we have an association that's supporting us, and I'm just one. And I know it's being echoed in other businesses, so I'm happy to be a part of DSMA and be in San Mateo.
Thank you. Our next and last speaker, Rick Bonilla.
Thank you very much, council members. I want to throw a little support to Jennifer, too, for all the work that she has done with the DSMA. Since I joined the council in 2015, I started functioning with the DSMA. I've lived near downtown and been walking around downtown since I moved to San Mateo in 91. Downtown has gone from night to day. Things are bright, they're glowing, they're happening. You can see that the merchants are engaged. It's just, it's fantastic the difference that has come about. And so I think it's because of people like McKenzie, who brings fresh new life to this executive seat, and these merchants who are so committed to making a difference and having downtown be a better place, that's more attractive, that serves more people, that's more interesting. The park is great, and we're doing a good job with that. We're going to be doing better. But I have to say, thank you all very much for supporting this resolution, which I'm pretty sure I'm, what I think is going to happen. I support the resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Well, with that, we'll close public comment, and we'll open it up to questions, comments, and eventually a motion, hopefully, from the council. Would anyone like to begin? Go ahead, Lisa. Thank you.
I think we all were raising our hands at the same time, so that was great. I'll just start first. I think it's probably fairly common knowledge that I am a very big downtown booster, and I am so excited about what's happening downtown for so many different reasons. And many people have mentioned it. I think some of the secret sauce is there is this incredible partnership between the DSMA, represented by McKenzie, and Lou. Thank you, Lou, for everything, everything, everything. The city, Jennifer Chen, Christina, Alex, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and the Chamber, Erica, Pauline, and community groups like B Street Boosters. So there is just this, and you know, as Lori said, it's gone beyond just the core, but it's really bringing in different groups like the North B Street Merchants Association. We're all so much stronger when we work together, and you all do an amazing job. There's a vibrancy here that I think is so special, and also the fact that you are the voice of small businesses. I hear a lot from all of you about issues that small businesses have, not the big corporations, not the nonprofits, but specifically what small businesses have, and you always bring ideas for solving things and how to be creative, which I also appreciate. I want to share a story that just happened today. I wound up meeting a friend of mine who happens to be a member of the House of Delegates, the lower house in Virginia. And, you know, so she's across the country. She came out here to visit her daughter, and she said to me, you know, I just learned the other day about downtown San Mateo, and my daughter, Georgia, who just graduated from USC, is living in Mountain View, working in Berkeley. She specifically said, Mom, I have to take you up to San Mateo to go to the pedestrian mall. And that's, I mean, if that is not an example of all the things you're all doing right, and what more we can do, you just should all collectively take a little bow. So a couple of questions I had. I know there's been a lot of effort on cleaning the streets and doing that in cooperation between the city and DSMA. How is the merchant education program going? Is going to teach them about how it's their responsibility as well? And, you know, making sure that there's only a certain percentage of clutter on the windows? And then also, how are we using volunteers to help get the word out, too?
So we are very lucky. As I mentioned in my presentation, Lance Hall from Public Works shares an office with me. He is very on top of it. So as we're talking about a partnership, you know, Lance really takes the forefront on noticing when things could be done better with individual businesses and chatting with them one-on-one. For DSMA, that's something that we put in the newsletter. We have flyers. We have a, you're taking part in a Clean Downtown flyer that we hand out to new businesses and as needed. The conversation about volunteers has not come up, but we're always open to new ideas and new conversations.
Because I think there are a lot of people that might be interested in helping out, certainly the boosters, but going beyond. Thank you very much. Couple of questions. I mean, the other thing, I want to really commend you for all the outbound marketing, and I realize I'm biased, but you're creating a picture in people's eyes of what downtown looks like and coordinating between the city and DSMA and the Chamber, and I think that's really helped. And all the videos are fantastic as well. So question about the $240,000 reserve. I would encourage you to think going forward, how to use that money, which is a huge amount of money to be entrusted, in the smartest possible way, so that you get the biggest bang for your buck, as opposed to just having it sit there. And I know that's part of ongoing strategy, but certainly as part of your financial sustainability plan, I would suggest that. And then, you know, I'd love for you to continue to tell stories of successes among the businesses, and the latest one I've seen is Honey and Hive, which started out as a pop-up. It started out online, and then it went to a pop-up, and now it's got a store. So really, really helpful and very much impact-oriented. And then finally, I noticed, and I don't know whether, you know, whether you're the one, I guess it's probably more a board question, but the salary for the DSMA, the salary money was flat this year, and I would hope that the board could be considering at least a cost of living increase, because there is so much good work going on, and we want to make sure that all of our DSMA employees are excited and motivated for all the right reasons. So thank you to everyone, and look forward to being part of many things going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you to the mayor. It's really hard to follow Councilmember Diaz Nash. I won't try to do so really, except just to echo the excitement and satisfaction. And I just can't help but remember, we've had a number of conversations over the years. You know, Rick mentioned in a public comment about how different downtown is since 91, and surely it's quite different. But frankly, it's a lot different since 2021. And, you know, we had some conversations here in City Hall in which Erica from the Chamber said, you know, we believe we can make this work with regard to the pedestrian mall, and boy, have you. What a difference, what a transformation we've undergone since those early days. And I thank you so much for putting your energies into making that possible. And it's amazing for me to think about how much has changed so positively in that short amount of time. And I feel many have already said it. It's a destination. It's a place to be, and I look forward to my next times there. Thank you.
Great job, everyone. Thank you.
All about cleanup, then. I loved the comment, and I just heard it again from the deputy mayor, that downtown San Mateo is the place to be. So I thought, hey, that's a slogan. Thank you, Amy, for that idea. I want to just say how much I appreciate the DSMA and all they do for San Mateo. I want to really just shout out for 120% increase in foot traffic in the last two years. That's amazing. It just shows that good things are happening in downtown San Mateo. I also would support events that are not just on the Ped Mall, particularly in North B Street. I know we have Fiesta, and we used to have Festa, which I think the Italian Peninsula Club has put an interest in, so I hope we continue to do more events like that. Also want to just keep on seeing us continue to have San Mateo be vibrant. It just shows how much it's been revitalized, not just in the last 20 years, but in the last two or three years. My only comments would be, I have, and I'm looking at this from demographics of my own family. I can see that my 15- and 17-year-old daughters, who five years ago would never dream of hanging out in downtown San Mateo, was always the mall, they're now starting to want to just go and hang out. And so with that, I hope that we can encourage and continue to encourage the downtown merchants to have events that are geared towards teens, because once teens deem something cool, it becomes very viral. I mean, they're posting TikToks for every event that I bring them to. So I think continued outreach to our, particularly to our teens, is fantastic, and that's a piece of advice. The other side of the coin is, you know, I have my mom, and, you know, I still think when I go downtown, that we are not seeing as much of the seniors get back to downtown yet. And I think there's opportunities there, especially because most of them aren't working. So there's things that they could be doing midweek to bring activity to the downtown in midweek. And perhaps we could look at things like rideshare-type programs and potentially, you know, a day a month, and maybe eventually a day a week, where we haven't really geared towards events in the afternoon for seniors. So just some ideas, but all in all, support everything you guys do. I also concur with Councilmember Diaz Nash that the board should look at, at minimum, a cost of living increase for the staff. And with that, thank you again for everything, and is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Please call. Did I skip something?
The motion is the staff recommendation to adopt a resolution.
The motion is to adopt a resolution to levy the annual assessments for the downtown business improvement area for fiscal year 2526.
Yes.
It's called roll.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lori?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Sverka Godiky?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes, and I want to just tag on, one thing I forgot was, celebrating what the city's doing, everybody should go check out the pedestrian scramble downtown. That's a really exciting thing that hopefully will help downtown, so put in a plug.
Thank you again to both of you for your presentation. Motion carries 5-0. All right, next up, item, a public hearing for item number 18, the 2526 Community Grant Development, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan Adoption. We'll have a presentation by Rachel Horst, our housing manager. Welcome, Rachel.
Good evening, council members. It's nice to join you virtually. I am joined by Jennifer Mora, our housing specialist, who I believe is getting ready to help drive on the slides.
She is. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Jennifer will be heading up this item, and then I will come in at the end. Thank you, mayor and council members, and thank you, Rachel, for the introduction. So my name is Jennifer Mora. I'm a housing specialist, and thank you for having us host this public hearing for the annual action plan for the fiscal year 2526 Community Development Block Grant. Yeah, so some context on what the Community Development Block Grant is. This is a federal grant that is given from HUD, which is also the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We receive an annual entitlement through a formula allocation, and we use the entitlement to fund for services and projects that serve San Mateo's most vulnerable neighborhoods and communities. And this is the planning and reporting cycle to maintain the city eligible to keep receiving federal grants such as CDBG. And this is a visual on how these plans and reports are connected. And we'll be going more in depth on what each report and plan is. So for the consolidated plan, also called as the COM Plan, we use a lot of acronyms and shorten our titles here. This is the city's five-year plan to address community development needs that is submitted to HUD. This is where we prioritize programs and projects that are based off community input, and our current COM Plan is in its fourth year, ending in fiscal year 2627. And the following two plans and reports are submitted annually and are based off the COM Plan. So for the first annual action plan, this is also submitted every year, and it showcases how we will use CDBG funds in the fiscal year on how we will meet our progress and goals that we list in the COM Plan. Additionally, for our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, we call it the CAPR. This is an opportunity for the city to report our accomplishments and progress that we listed in both the annual action plan and the COM Plan. And again, this is just to highlight where we currently are in the cycle. So we're currently in the drafting phase of the annual action plan for fiscal year 2526. And what I'm going to explain next is just the steps that we have been taking in order to draft the annual action plan. So we first start off with the community needs assessment that was held in November 20th of last year. Thanks to our Community Relations Commission, they hosted this opportunity for community members to provide their input on what we should prioritize our funding for for the following fiscal year. So these are just some examples of what we received. We received a lot of comments on the need of basic human needs, senior services preserving or providing affordable housing, and also street and sidewalk improvements. Next off is our Notice of Funding Availability that was launched in December 2024. This was a joint NOFA that was released with our CDBG cohort, which is made up of various jurisdictions within San Mateo County and with the county itself. The city of San Mateo received a total of 13 applications for the city's community funding, which we also refer to CDBG. We then brought these 13 applications to the Community Relations Commission, and this is where they reviewed applications, and they made funding recommendations based off those applications that we presented to them. Since I mentioned frequently the Community Relations Commission, I just want to touch on what are the roles when it comes to CDBG? How I mentioned before, they review applications, they make funding recommendations, and they also review our drafts of our plans and reports that we submit to HUD. So for example, they review the COM Plan, the annual action plan, and the CAPR. And again, they also hosted the community needs workshop. So based off their funding recommendations, that was developed in February of this year. These are just some of the recommendations that they made. For example, we are funding five categories, and I will go more in depth on the budget and exactly how the numbers would look like for each funding category, but I just wanted to provide an example of how the discussion between the CRC went when it came to reviewing those applications. Because of the time of drafting the annual action plan, we did not know yet our entitlement amount for CDBG, therefore, we based off our budget on an estimate of what we received in fiscal year 2425. This is also shown in the agenda report. However, we will touch more and base on what the city will, if the city receives more than what is estimated above, because just last week, we received our entitlement, and we actually received more than what we estimated. So that's really great news. And last but not least, I also just want to And last but not least, I also just want to give a little bit of context on our public hearings and notices. So we have our first public hearing at our Community Relations Commission meeting. This was hosted last month. And this is where the CRC reviewed the draft 2526 Annual Action Plan and also provided recommendation to staff and city council. During this time, we had our public comment period open, so it started on April 15th. And it actually ended today. It was a 30 day public comment period. And we accepted comments via public hearings, email and mail. So far, we only received one comment. And our second and last public hearing is tonight's public hearing for the adoption of the 202526 Annual Action Plan. Now that I went through the details of our drafting process for the annual action plan, I will pass it on to Rachel, who will go more in depth on the budget for next fiscal year.
Thank you, Jennifer. So as Jennifer just said, we received our award amount on May 14th. So this is just last week. And so this item was being published as we saw that number. But the good news is that we received slightly more than last year's, really maintaining the entitlement amount. So as you can see from this chart here, 766315, that's the amount that we actually received. Our estimates that were in the report and in the draft action plan are based on the 753586, which we received in 2425. The amount that we have to work with consists of this entitlement amount that we receive annually. In addition to program income and what we call unprogrammed carryover, that's just money that was previously in, in prior years in various activities that went back into the larger CDBG pot and is available to be used now. So we're working with $1,045,581 to spend in the various spending categories for CDBG. Next slide. So this is the breakdown. Jennifer touched on the areas that we fund. There is an administration amount that goes towards staffing, supporting this program. We also have fair housing services under the administration cap. I'll get into that in future slides. There is community funding, which in CDBG parlance is known as public services. This is capped at 15% of entitlement. So even if we wanted to go much above this number, we are limited in how much we can allocate to the various organizations that receive public services funding. Minor home repair, this category consists now of one recipient at $107,000. Economic development has two organizations that are receiving $40,000 each. Then new this year, under public facilities, we have two nonprofit organizations that will receive funds for capital improvements to their facilities. And as we do each year, we have funds allocated to street and sidewalk improvements, which are done by City Public Works. So the asterisks are there because we increased these amounts slightly to reflect the actual entitlement amount that we received. And the estimates, they were, they're slightly lower. We're following the contingency language that was in, that is in the action plan that says, if we receive more than expected, we will increase the community funding amount to the extent possible, staying under the cap. We'll increase admin somewhat, staying under the 5% cap. And we will increase street and sidewalk improvements. So that is what we did. And that is what the final numbers will look like. Next slide. So under public services, we have the, these recipients, these organizations. As I said, it's limited to 15% of entitlement. As Jennifer pointed out, this is a quote unquote renewal year. So that means that these organizations are already performing these services and applied to perform them for another year. They received all the same amount in 2425, requested that amount for 2526, and will now receive $16,400 each. Now, this is reflective of the increase of about $12,000. Well, not increase, but the amount more that we received than we anticipated. But it's also reflective of the fact there is one fewer organization on this list as they chose not to continue with CDBG in San Mateo. So we are both adding to the, the amount anticipated and distributing it amongst fewer organizations. Next slide. As I mentioned, we have a fair housing services contract with Project Sentinel and have for several years. These services are related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, preventing and addressing housing discrimination. And these $25,000 are actually housed under administration. So they're under the admin cap. The, the other, the remaining funds are used for, as I said, staff support of the CDBG program. Project Sentinel aims to serve 60 individuals in 202526 with their award. Next slide. Under minor home rehab, we have Rebuilding Together Peninsula, which runs two programs. We previously had two organizations under minor home rehab. One of the organizations chose not to reapply or to continue providing their minor home rehab services. So we have rebuilding together with their Safe at Home Program and their National Rebuilding Day Program, which together adds up 207,000. These programs both support low income homeowners with various types of minor repairs from home health and safety to energy and water conservation. Next slide. Oh, and they aim to serve four and six households, households respectively. Most organizations are maintaining what they did in prior years. Under economic development, we have two organizations, Renaissance and Upwards. Upwards was a new applicant last year, so it will be in their second year. Renaissance has been funded for several years. Both were awarded $40,000. They both provide technical assistance for small businesses or individuals that are developing small businesses. Although they do have a specific clientele, Upwards serves childcare providers. Renaissance serves lower income individuals developing a business. They aim to serve 50 individuals and Upwards aims to serve 11 childcare providers with their funds. Next slide. Under public facilities, this year, we had 200,000 available. These are improvements for the facilities of these two nonprofits. They may be used for the facilities of any publicly owned nonprofit organization that is opened, open to the general public, as these both are. Hip Housing is receiving 150,000 to replace a broken elevator in their new downtown location. Cora, Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, will receive $50,000 for a replacement of their HVAC and breezeway. So both of these organizations will see improvements to, to their brick and mortar locations. Next slide. And as I mentioned, we have $453,315 allocated to City Public Works led projects. These are pedestrian improvements this year, planned for near senior housing and points of interest identified in the age friendly San Mateo Action Plan. And I will mention that public facilities improvements that are, that are performed by public works, these are within the CDBG priority neighborhood boundaries. So this is the only area where the improvements themselves are within a specific target area. The other services provided by the organizations that I mentioned are citywide, but primarily serving lower income residents of San Mateo. And we're just showing here that 43% of our entitlement amount is, is going into the CDBG priority neighborhood by funding these, these projects, these, these sidewalks, street improvements. Next slide. So what are our next steps? Jennifer kind of went over the, the cycle. But tonight is the public hearing for city council to adopt this action plan, to direct staff to submit the final 2526 CDBG Annual Action Plan to HUD. We will make the update to reflect the actual entitlement amount since, of course, what is out there for public comment right now contains the, the estimated amounts. But otherwise, that draft will stay the same and will be submitted to, to HUD in the next week or two, if approved. And next slide. We thank you for listening to our presentation and we look forward to taking any questions or the discussion.
Thank you, Jennifer and Rachel, for a great presentation. Before we go to questions and comments, we'll open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment?
No, Mayor Newsom, I have not received any request to speak on this item. Oh. If you are in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. We have one request to speak.
Okay.
Per our rules and procedures, we'll do three minutes.
Thank you.
Melanie Forre. Please unmute your mic.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Newsom and council members. My name is Melanie Forre. I'm the Community Impact Manager at Upwards. On behalf of the Boost team, I just wanted to thank you and the wonderful city staff and committees for your continued support and for championing San Mateo's in-home childcare providers and the working families they serve. And to quickly recap, Boost helps low to moderate income childcare providers grow their business, create local teaching assistant jobs, and expand access to affordable quality care. Thanks to your support, we've already exceeded our goals halfway through the year. The Boost program has offered personalized one-on-one business support to eight in-home family childcare providers, which was three more than expected. And three of those providers have hired teaching assistants, creating two full-time and three part-time jobs. An impressive 80% have increased their capacity, which not only helps increase their revenue, but expands access to affordable quality care for working families. We've also helped over 200 families find care that fits their unique needs. There's a lot more that I'd like to share, but I know it's getting late for you all. So I just want to kind of chart the, the year ahead. With your support, we can really help eight additional providers and create at least three new local jobs and expand access to care for hundreds of families. This is important as nearly 100 in-home providers still struggle to stay sustainable and 40% of children under age six lack access to licensed care in San Mateo. So I just wanted to thank you all again for your support. I'd be happy to share more about how the program works and specific success stories. Jennifer can share my email and I'm happy to reach out as well. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. We will close public comment and open it up to questions, comments, and a motion from council. Who wants to go first?
I was going to move that we adopt.
Okay.
Well, thank you for a great presentation. I am supportive. I did just want to ask, you know, can you talk a little bit for the public about any contingency planning that's happening in case these grants or the federal funding were to be cut? Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Sverka Godiki for the question. We, the contingency plan that we mentioned was only for this year because we had absolutely no idea what we were going to receive, if we were going to receive funds. So in the short term, that's the good news. In terms of what we will do in future years, if there is reduction in funding, if there's change at the federal level, we do not have that, that is, that is not in the action plan and that is not, there is no written contingency plan for if that occurs. I think that we would have advanced notice of that occurring. As Jennifer mentioned, we are part of a consortium that is led by the county of San Mateo. And so by working together, we meet on a monthly basis. We all communicate with the same HUD field representative in San Francisco. That's how we find out what is coming down the pike and if there will be some kind of dramatic change like that, which fortunately this year there was not. And so I would anticipate that we would be having these conversations, actually not that far from now, because as soon as we get our action plan finalized and we start July 1, we start planning for the next year. So I don't have specific, a specific contingency plan I can point to. We would need to develop it and bring it before, most likely, the city council. Were it to come to that, but so far it has not. So when it, if, if it does, of course, we will inform you and you'll, you'll be the first to know. And, and we will have to come up, I think, together with the other consortium jurisdictions, how we would handle it.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a recommendation to adopt the 202526 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Annual Action Plan and direct staff to submit the plan to the US Department of HUD. Authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement with HUD for CDBG funds. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
Can we get a roll call, please? Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sverka Godiki?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Do we need a break? Do we need a break? Okay, everybody's good for keep going. All right, moving on to item 19, Worker Resource Center Update and Agreement Renewal Terms Presentation. Rachel, looks like you'll be staying with us. Welcome back.
Through the mayor. I think before we begin this item, I think one of our councilmembers wanted to say something for the record.
Thank you for the reminder.
For the record, I am an unpaid board member of Samaritan House, which supports the functions of the city, and I will be participating in this item.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, councilmembers, again, as I'm, I'm still here. Rachel Horst, Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. I'm joined this evening by Van Tiggins, who is our housing specialist. I will kick things off. We are also joined by Samaritan House, which is really the star of the show this evening. They will give a presentation as well. And then we'll come back at the end to ask council for directions, since this item is both a presentation and an item seeking some feedback from city council. So without further ado, next slide, we only have, I think, a couple of slides for background.
Good evening, mayor, council, and city staff.
Um, so sorry. I think we have a tech, there was a little bit of a delay. I have, I just have one, it's two kickoff slides and then I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Technology. So yes, quick agenda, background and introduction from myself. And then we will have Rena, I'll stop talking, and Rena from Samaritan House will present on the Worker Resource Center. Then Van will come in and provide recommendations and talk about next steps. Okay, so the, the, the background we have on, on this item is apparently not in this version of the slides. So I will just simply kick things off. I think Rena will probably talk a little bit about the history of the Worker Resource Center. But what staff is setting up tonight is a conversation about the status of the Worker Resource Center, which has been operating continuously for over 22 years. We have been supporting it as a city in the form of an operations contract with Samaritan House, as is mentioned in the agenda report, and also through a lease of a facility at 171 North Amphlett Boulevard in the city. Previously, the Worker Resource Center was located at the site of what is now Kiku Crossing, the affordable housing development on city-owned property. They moved to the Amphlett location in 2020, so had been there for a few years. And what we are looking at now is a renewal of the contract with Samaritan House, which is a, it was a two-year contract. We are seeking direction from council on that specific contract, both the term and the amount. And we are also, just as background, currently looking into the lease at 171 North Amphlett as that expires at the end of August of this year. So we are looking for potential other locations or, and also talking to the owner of 171 North Amphlett to negotiate a new lease. And so we will separately return to city council with that item to, to continue operating the Worker Resource Center moving forward from the end of, of August. So that is the background we wanted to provide for you. We'll come back in at the end, as I said. And now I will hand it over to Rena to, to give the main presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening, all. My name is Rena Sandoval and I'm the Director of Food and Community Programs at Samaritan House. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to give you an overview of the Worker Resource Center, a program that's very near and dear to my heart, that I'm super proud of. Not just because I run it, but because of the impact that it has on the community. and, you know, the, the lives we've been able to improve with our services. Next slide. So the purpose of the Worker Resource Center is to provide a safe place where workers can seek employment from local businesses and homeowners. Workers are matched to employment depending on skill set, and fees and estimates are negotiated at the center. So it works in a few different ways. Before my time, the workers have decided that they wanted to go through a raffle system, which basically is bingo. So this is for work that is going out from the center. So for example, a homeowner will come to the center and request some basic labor. In that sense, we do a raffle system. This helps, you know, workers have a, like an even playing field to go out to work because there are times where a homeowner will say, oh, you know, I want that person because he's 20 years old. And I let them know, well, we have to be fair to all and, you know, that 55-plus person will run circles around the, you know, the youngster. So it works out, you know, quite well. Now, if an employer calls us or has a long-term project and it's more skilled labor, then we set it up somewhat like a, you know, kind of like a recruiting agency. We want to make sure that the worker that is going out is able to do that work, is treated fairly, paid fairly, and there's accountability at both ends. So that works out great for, you know, those two ways that we are able to, you know, schedule workers. And then we also have workers that are coming to the center looking for long-time work. And I'll get into that a little bit later. So next slide, please. So we're located at 171 North Amphlett Boulevard in San Mateo, directly next to La Hacienda Market. And the majority of our workers either bike or walk to the center. We're open six days a week, but we do provide jobs on Sundays and after hours. The phone goes directly to my cell phone, so if anybody needs workers on a weekend or Sundays, I know where everybody lives, so I make sure to schedule it depending on skill set and geographic area. So demographics, so roughly 95% of the workers reside in the north central neighborhood. And primarily, workers that wait for work on a daily basis are men. But we now have an increase in women that we provide with jobs and referrals as well. At one time, I was the only woman you'd see there, along with some homeowners and, you know, contractors. Now we have an 18% of women coming to the center. Next slide. So job placement, it's a variety of jobs. It's carpentry, construction, even event services. We've had, we've had workers scheduled to set up weddings, birthday parties, basically serve, you know, like, you know, waiters or waitstaff, gardening, housekeeping, janitorial services, landscaping, moving, and painting. In these two particular pictures, we have people doing two different jobs. We have one person who is doing more skilled labor. And this other picture where you see the three people along with the woman, this is a married couple who unfortunately just recently lost their job due to, you know, current events. Came to the center and I was able to, we were able to put, you know, a few hundred dollars in their pocket. They're super distraught because they had permanent work and now they're not really sure what they're going to do. They live in Burlingame and we're trying desperately to, you know, get them some employment so they can pay their rent. Next slide, please. So we have ongoing support services. Year-to-date, we've, 14,816 meals have been provided. We get meals delivered from Samaritan House, our kitchen, five days a week. And again, this is just what we tracked. This is not counting the snacks and, you know, to-go meals that people take. As mentioned, I also run the food recovery program, so we make sure that no food ever goes to waste. We also get toiletries and donations from many of our, you know, grocery rescue food generators. This could be either clothing or shoes, face cream, you know, all kinds of things. So we want to make sure that our workers look good and feel good because it boosts your self-esteem. So we also have ESL volunteer-led classes. We have a volunteer ESL teacher who comes, depending on his schedule. We have IMAP Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, who comes monthly to provide information on the dangers of alcohol and opioid use. We're so fortunate that we have legal immigration services from a pro bono eternity, who is amazing. She's been working with us quite a few years and has helped out our workers, along with other Samaritan House clients, quite a bit. Just miscellaneous form preparation, whatever it is that someone needs, come on by, we'll see what we can do to help you. Obviously, referrals for employment, resume, and job applications. We're very heavy on that. We have a lot of workers that might not necessarily be too tech-savvy or just not know how to navigate the system. That's what we're there for. We're there to make sure that we can help them apply online and just wraparound services, clothing, food, housing, support, and healthcare. We all work together at Samaritan House and, you know, we, we see a worker in need. Let's see what they need, assess their need, and try to find them help. We've kind of just become the informal information hub in the north central neighborhood. You don't necessarily have to be a worker. Come on in. If you need some help, we'll see how we can help. Next slide. So partnerships, Silicon Valley Bike Coalition. Year-to-date, we, they've provided 100 bikes, 100 bikes, along with helmets and lights. Our workers take so much pride in their bikes. I mean, it's like their cars. So, you know, you'll see them at the center, like basically greasing them and doing all these bike things to their bikes and comparing bikes. And again, a lot of pride in their bikes. Koschland Foundation, I'm actually a Koschland Fellow, so a program that's working to help revitalize, you know, the north central neighborhood. Worker Resource Center is in the north central neighborhood, as is the dining room, which, you know, I'm also in charge of, which is at the Congregational Church. So yeah, heavy in the north central neighborhood. Our beloved neighbor Rudolph's Interiors, he's our next-door neighbor at the center, great friend of the center, huge supporter, who is also Belmont Redwood Shore's Rotarian. We work, you know, with some faith-based organizations, St. Paul's and St. Dunstan Catholic Church. They've hired us for a few of their events. We work quite a bit with Kaminar, do a lot of housekeeping jobs, janitorial services with them, as well as just between friends. They've hired us for, you know, different events at the San Mateo Event Center, as well as the Cow Palace. Community outreach. Our team goes out and does business visits to local businesses, you know, whether it be, you know, getting applications or, you know, flyer distribution. We want to make sure that the neighborhood knows that we're there and our workers are there to help out in any way we can. Very important for us, employer evaluations. This is an evaluation that we send out with employers with a rating system, as well as feedback. We want to make sure that everybody we're sending out is doing what they say they can do and that our employers are happy with our services. And honestly, our satisfaction rate is, is quite high. We also do a lot of follow-up phone calls, monthly street outreach. So our team goes out over by, you know, El Dorado, Fourth Avenue, 7-Eleven. And, you know, we try to make sure that the day laborers out on the street know about our services. And we can't promise them work, but we can't promise them a hot meal, referrals, and basically making sure that they know that they have a place where they can turn to in case they're subject to some sort of, you know, wage theft or anything that happens outside our center. So we're, we're there kind of just to help the, the community. We have a communications team that is responsible for our social media. We're heavy on the relationship building with community partners because at the end of the day, we need employers. We need people to come to the center because that's how people get work. So, and word of mouth, I mean, we, we rely heavily on our great reputation. A lot of accountability on both sides. We want to make sure our workers are held to a certain standard and honestly, super, super proud of, of, you know, the large group of workers that we have on a daily basis. And this particular picture here, from a few years ago, when we were working with a DSMA doing a cleanup, we would actually love to revisit that partnership, if doable. It worked out quite nicely for us. Next slide. And mental health wellness. I mean, we're just a big family there. We connect day labors to other like-minded individuals who understand each other's hardships. A lot of these, you know, workers have gone through struggles and, you know, they, they want to meet other people that may be in their same situation, where they don't feel alone. We want to create a safe and vulnerable environment of support, empowerment, and problem-solving. We're there to coach people. What is your issue? What is your problem? Let me see how we can help. In order to prevent isolation, loneliness, and depression, many of them are away from their families. They're here alone. They don't have anybody. There's been countless times where we've had workers come to the center and let us know, oh, well, you know, my sibling just passed away or my mom just passed away. And that's where they go to for support. And we like to focus on opportunities to bring them self-worth and improve their independence and stability. It doesn't feel good not to have income. It doesn't feel good not to be able to pay for your basic needs. We're there to support. We're there to help. And we also have activities and holiday celebrations. We have foosball and, you know, we have foosball and then we have puzzles and celebrate basically every holiday celebration, including soccer, because basically considered a holiday for, for most of these people. And going into volunteerism and neighborhood pride. We've done Bafrot Cleanup, the north central community cleanup, and we've done non-scheduled neighborhood cleanups. Props to, you know, Public Works, who, who have been a great help and are only a text away when we need them. Take a lot of pride in, you know, making sure that our, you know, our surrounding area is clean because if it doesn't look good, it doesn't make us feel good. So we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing some, you know, some volunteerism and giving back into the community, especially in the neighborhood where we reside. So some program accomplishments. April 2025, client days utilizing center, 811, current year-to-date, 7,408. Jobs provided for this month is 314, current year-to-date, 3,550. And this is only what we can actually track. This is what's coming through the center. Many times, workers are maybe going on a one job and then they'll disappear for a month and then they'll come back and it's like, hey, where have, where have you been? Oh, remember that person you sent me out to? I've been working with that person for a month or I got a long-term contract or even years. That's how relationships are made. We're doing our best to try to track that and the generated income coming into the center, but it is a little, it is a little difficult. But at the end of the day, we've accomplished our goal and people are working. So total clients served, unduplicated, we have 136 for the month of April. Year-to-date is 467. I anticipate by the end of the year, which, our fiscal year, which will be end of June, that number will increase. Next, please. Well, this picture right here, I actually really love. Few years old, this was a north central community cleanup. There is actually probably triple of us there, but we all kind of just, you know, separated from each other. I really like this because, you know, we had family members participate, children. Afterwards, Public Works, you know, they put on a, you know, a cool barbecue with burgers and, and we all kind of just hung out and just kind of like a bonding experience. So I really, I always use this picture because I love it because I feel like at the end of the day, we all have the same goal in mind. We want, we want people to be productive members of our community. You know, they go to school here, they, they, or their children go to school here, they go to church, they're spending money here. And at the end of the day, it's in our best interest to make sure that those that may be less fortunate or do not have the same issues that we have, you know, are doing well because it's a win-win-for-all. And also being able to give affordable, you know, services to, you know, homeowners who might just have a weekend job or something like that. So again, thank you, the city, so much for your partnership, your support. This program is super important and, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Reina. Thank you for your presentation. Staff is seeking direction from city council on whether council supports renewing an agreement with Samaritan House to continue operations of the Worker Resource Center for a three-year term at $195,000 annually. Based on council's direction, staff will draft an operations agreement for a three-year term and return to council for approval. Staff will also work to secure a three-year lease renewal and return to council for approval. That concludes our presentation, and we're available to take any questions you might have.
And I also wanted to add, I'm going to go off-script for just a moment here, to, that as Reina mentioned, there is a partnership with DSMA for, for downtown cleanup and that will be coming back. So we will look forward to working with Samaritan House and Worker Resource Center on that again. There will be opportunities to partner and help with downtown cleanup. So I just wanted to put in a plug for that coming back.
That's great to hear. Okay, before we go into public, before we open up to the council, we need to open up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak on public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have not received a request to speak in chambers. If you are in our virtual environment and you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. It seems that we don't have any requests to speak.
Okay, then we will close public comment and open it up to questions, comments, and feedback from the council. I saw the council member to my right would like to start. Councilmember Swerko Kudiki.
Thank you. Great presentation and thank you so much for all the work you're doing in San Mateo. I did just want to follow up about the building, 171 Amphlett. I did notice that in the staff report. We're looking at potentially new locations. And I just wonder, you know, what we're doing to think through logistics, if workers are used to coming to this particular site, how we're going to get them to go to a new site and where that site may be. And it's okay, Rachel, if you don't have the answer right now, but I, I would love some follow-up there.
Sure, and we can take a crack at it and maybe Reina can also speak up on this because we've been working together on, on exploring all of our options now that it is time for a new lease. I think the space at 171 North Amphlett, and again, I'll let Reina talk more about this, but it has been working well. The, the location is, is good. The space itself is functional. And so it is not necessarily so that we need to, to, to go to another location. But since it is on the table, since we, you know, we have to execute a new lease, we have just been looking around at potential other options. But doing so specifically with the criteria of where is it located? Is this an improvement over the current location? Would it be difficult to have people come to this new location? In addition to, of course, what is this in the space itself? Because the Worker Resource Center has specific needs for the type of space that, that it occupies, just because people are coming and going during the day. As Reina mentioned, there are 100 bikes, right? They didn't have storage. So we've been going through all of that with our, with, with the team at Samaritan House. And we're just in the process of figuring out, yeah, what is the best option? Is the best option to remain in place? That may very well be the case. So Reina, did you want to maybe talk about how we've been thinking through that?
Yeah, basically, I would like to stay where we're currently at, so.
Great. And then I would just say I'm generally supportive of the 195,000, so.
Just for the record, just wanted to put out there that it's just good due diligence of staff to go ahead and look at alternatives as well, just to always see, to make sure that we're getting the best possible rent for the facility, as that is our job, being the local government. So just putting that out there.
Please.
First of all, Reina and Rachel, thank you so much for your report. And Dan, thank you so much for your report. I'm a really proud board member and very proud of the services that you provide, specifically in my district in north central. I'm a really proud board member and very proud of the services that you provide specifically in my district in North Central. An issue that, and I took a tour of the Worker Resource Center not a few months ago with Raina. So thank you for welcoming me into your home and for me to meet some of your clients. One of the issues that has come up is that, especially in council member or in Mayor Newsom's district, the central neighborhood, there's been some complaints about folks that are on Fourth Avenue and maybe we could be increasing outreach to the folks who, who are not opting into the center. Is, are, are we looking at additional opportunities for outreach to try to bring more folks in?
Yeah, as mentioned, yeah, we do do quite a bit of outreach. But if the jobs aren't coming in, people are going to choose to be out on the street. That's one of the reasons why we're really, you know, pushing getting employers and getting homeowners. And because the more employers we get, the more workers will, will come because workers feel like they have a better opportunity out on the street, especially a lot of the younger guys. But we, we definitely do try to recruit, you know, workers and try to get them into the center so they're not out in the elements and subject to a lot of the wage theft that is happening. A lot of it is happening. And unfortunately, they're coming to the center, seeking assistance where I have to, you know, put in wage theft paperwork for, for them. But yeah, well, we'll, we'll keep on trying and we'll do a better job at it. But at the end of the day, the more work that we have at our center, the more, you know, the more people will, will stay off the street. So we'll keep trying.
I just want to, through the mayor, I just want to quickly thank you, Raina, for your presentation. I'm, I'm blown away by how much is being done in the center. I, I, I really appreciated learning more about what, what's going on and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for a great presentation. Very supportive of this program. I don't use it as much as I used to and I'll try to renew my usage of it. I appreciate what council member Fernandez mentioned because I do hear a lot from my central neighborhood, particularly because they tend to hang out there. We also have, not a high degree, but we have some people that get publicly intoxicated in that and it causes frustration from the neighbors because the neighbors have, you know, are used to having Samaritan House right there where Kiku Crossing is now. So anything we can do to continue to try to redirect people, I know it's not easy. I also would wonder if it would be an idea to have like a sandwich board or a sandwich sign redirecting from, you know, from where they're hanging out and having it bilingual so that it could also kind of be a pitch both for people who are employers but also potential employees as to why they might want to go there as opposed to being out on the street.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I know when we were on Fifth, there was a sign directing people to Fifth Avenue to our center. So yeah, I would, that'd be great.
Yep. And I can tell you that the Central Neighborhood Association is very in favor of it. In fact, there's probably three or four people who would let you put them in front of their homes. So yes.
I, yeah, I, I remember.
Yeah, I know. And, and they, that said, the always positive still about the program. There's nobody that, it's, it's more just a frustration with the behavior sometimes.
No, I understand.
What else? I, one, one idea that I had, and I was wondering is, have you looked at developing training programs? For example, for home healthcare type jobs, for manufacturing type jobs. I know we don't have as much manufacturing, obviously, on the peninsula as we did 30 years ago. But have you, is there any kind of partnership or outreach with those types of programs?
Not at the moment. Something to look into. Again, we have some limited resources, but definitely something to look into because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get people on their feet and get them working. I affectionately tell people, I don't want to see you here, no offense, because I want to see people working. But something to look into, yes.
Another suggestion, very minor, but is that when you send people out as a team, it would be helpful perhaps to have someone be the lead. So, and I had, again, it's been over a decade since I used to do this. But, you know, I had sprinklers installed and I was, I was the lead. I was out there, you know, helping them. And they, and what was great about your, your group is that there were people who were very specialized in what they did. So they, oh, we know how to install sprinklers. We know how to do it all. So I, I didn't have to be the expert, but I did have to be the lead. And now that I'm older and I'm not comfortable being on my knees for eight hours, it would be helpful perhaps if you had someone, if they came in and said, hey, I need a, you know, I need a fence installed or I need something painted or I need sprinklers installed. It'd be helpful if you said, well, hey, if you need three people, you know, your lead would be Jose or Fred or whoever it is.
Okay.
And, and just a suggestion. And you could pay them a little more if they had that manager or lead responsibility too. But something that, when I look back at the program, I think that would be something that would be helpful. So take it as just a suggestion and nothing more.
No, no, appreciate it. Great suggestion. Whatever we can do to, you know, make sure we, you know, get the homeowners and the contractors and the businesses coming, we're all about it, so.
Absolutely. Well, thank you again for a great presentation. Anyone else have any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Just want to get direction that I have a majority wanting to move forward. Yes, I see the nodding heads. Thank you.
Oh, okay. We don't have to do a resolution. Great. So all in support. Fantastic.
We'll bring items back in the near future.
See five nodding heads, five nodding heads.
Yes, I see a unanimous five nodding heads to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again. Thanks for your presentation. And now we move on to our final item of the night, Climate Action Plan Annual Progress Report. We'll have a presentation by Andrea Chow, the Sustainability Analyst. Welcome, Andrea.
All right. Good evening. My name is Andrea Chow. I'm the Sustainability Analyst with the City of San Mateo. And tonight I will provide a progress report presentation on the implementation of our city's climate action plan. The city's climate action plan was updated and adopted in 2020 and then readopted to align with the general plan in 2024. The climate action plan includes strategies and measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our community. Implementation measures fall into different categories, including building electrification, renewable energy, energy efficiency, clean transportation fuels, sustainable transportation, solid waste, water and wastewater, and off-road equipment. Staff provide annual progress reports to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and City Council every year to highlight accomplishments in various data points. And while I am the city's lead on the climate action plan, I want to point out that I am not the only staff person who works on efforts to reduce our city's carbon footprint. Many of these efforts are cross-departmental and require coordination with CDD, parks, Public Works, and library staff. And these next slides will showcase a few different accomplishments from 2024. In January 2025, the City Council adopted an Energy Performance Reach Code for new construction that requires energy compliance margins for new buildings. I'm happy to report that the California Energy Commission approved the city's reach code in April and it is now in effect through December 31st, 30th of this year, resulting in lower carbon buildings and new construction. City staff continue to evaluate replacement of equipment and vehicles with electric options. And currently, the city fleet includes 15 electric units. The installation of charging infrastructure is much needed to continue to support this transition. And progress has been made at the three city facilities that house the most vehicles, including City Hall, the Corporation Yard, and PD. Staff have leveraged various programs, including the PG&E EV Fleets Program and PCE's Public EV Fleets Program for both technical assistance and cost savings. Most recently, the City Council approved the PG&E EV Fleets Program Terms and Conditions Document at the May 5th City Council Meeting, allowing the city to move forward in the program. The program will result in the installation of 12 Level 2 charging ports at the Corporation Yard and the city will receive rebates for the purchase of medium and heavy-duty vehicles. EV charging infrastructure available to the public is critical in supporting broad EV ownership throughout the community. Staff rely on crowdsourced data through PlugShare.com to track the installation of EV chargers on private property that are available to the public. At city-owned facilities, we have two DC fast charging ports and 68 Level 2 charging ports. And then on private property, there are 38 fast charging ports, 132 Level 2 charging ports, as well as 84 Tesla charging ports. And that makes a total of 254 charging ports. At the end of 2023, when I gave this report, there were 174 charging ports. And so we're continuing to see tremendous growth in EV charging network every year. I'd like to highlight two pedestrian improvement projects. In winter 2024, the city completed pedestrian safety improvements at three downtown parking garages, including the central garage, Main Street Garage, and Second and Elk Minno Garage. The project made pedestrians and exiting vehicles more visible to each other and the improvements included protected walkways, better signage, audio and visual warning devices, as well as convex mirrors for better visibility around corners. At Hillsdale High School, the city was awarded funding for designing pedestrian improvements on 31st Avenue near Hillsdale High School. The project will advance recommended improvements from a walk audit conducted with the Hillsdale High School community into construction-ready design. And the design will include curbing extensions, high-visibility crosswalks, and a new traffic signal at the Alameda de las Publes intersection. Community members continue to take advantage of a variety of rebates to reduce water and energy consumption in their homes. PCE provides rebates for heat pump water heaters, heat pump HVAC systems, and electric panel upgrades. Cal Water provides rebates for efficient equipment and turf replacement. And the city continues to issue our rebates for rain barrels and electric leaf blowers. Of note, PCE saw growth in the heat pump HVAC rebate and the city issued a record number of leaf blower rebates in 2024. The Electrify San Mateo effort aims to identify existing building decarbonization policies to help meet the city's climate goals. And the project team has made significant progress in collecting community input on the different policy pathways that were reviewed by City Council in January 2024. Outreach continues on this effort in 2025 with community workshops and an information gathering survey. But more information on this project will be provided as a standalone item to the City Council coming up on June 16th. And that concludes my presentation for you all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation. Before we go out of comments, let's see if there's public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on public comment on this issue?
No, we don't. We don't have any requests to speak.
Very nice. Okay, then I will close public comment and open it up to questions, comments, and feedback from the council. Does anyone want to go first? Council member Swarko Kadiki.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. Great presentation. Just one question. What are some ways that we're, you know, looking to educate the community on different rebate opportunities as it pertains to climate change or electrification?
Yeah, great question. So we rely on the city's e-news, our social media, our homepage spotlight, and also use of things like the insert in the garbage bill. And we know this takes continuous engagement. So we're continuing to promote the different programs and the rebates I just listed. But we realize that it often takes multiple impressions for someone to take action.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you to the mayor. Thank you, Andrea, for sticking with us and for your presentation. I was just curious about if you've heard anything. I saw in the report that you work with a shared mobility working group that's like broader than the city. And I'm just curious if you've heard anything, like what have you been hearing lately? I, I recall Burlingame and Millbrae have a new bike share program, sort of, sort of new. And I've had the pleasure of riding on some of the VO scooters in South San Francisco. They've recently done kind of a partnership on their east side with businesses there. So, you know, given that we haven't had a lot of engagement at the city level, what are you hearing and what do you think might be possible in the future?
Sure. So a little bit of background, the city adopted a shared mobility permit now maybe five years ago. And that permit program established a pathway for operators to apply to develop and lead a bike share program in San Mateo. So it was limited to bike share and, and currently is limited. The neighboring cities of Burlingame and Millbrae attained grant funding to help subsidize a rollout of their bike share program. And so I am in communication with the sustainability staff persons who run their program to understand, you know, the challenges as well as the, how, how the program is working out. And so it's been, it's been good to follow and understand that program. And then I think the closest city that has a shared mobility program moving south is Redwood City. And so there's a lot of coordination on, on a regional basis to, to monitor other shared mobility programs. That's the, the phase that I'm in now, just tracking to understand how programs are, are working. I think the rollout of Redwood City happened maybe two years ago and then Millbrae and Burlingame was just last year.
Thank you. I saw a, a small note about the citywide Transportation Demand Management Ordinance is, is still in the works and I'm, I'm curious if it would come back to council this year.
I am not the best staff person for follow-up on that. I can follow up separately, maybe.
I can say that right now, we're still going through staff transitions, specifically in the planners, transportation planner area. It still is one of the priority projects that we have for our transportation initiatives. And so I can't say for certain that'll be later this year, but I know for sure, at least in this next year, 12 months, should be coming forward.
Thank you. And I was just curious, Andrea, about, I, I think especially as we've been hearing a little bit throughout the night about uncertainty with regard to funding opportunities and, you know, even how broader efforts environmentally might be received or supported. I'm not sure how much impact that might have on our outlook on the next sort of comprehensive climate action plan update. And do we have a sense of when we might undergo that?
Yeah, I think we're really fortunate in the City of San Mateo to have really robust regional partners that aren't as impacted by federal impacts. And so there remains a lot of support for, within our partners and for our climate programs. As far as undergoing another climate action plan update, I know we tend to do a greenhouse gas emissions inventory every five years. And, and so our last inventory was in 2021. I think we'd aim for 2025. So that would give us at least more of a data-driven approach to understanding where we are in our emissions reductions. Having just completed the technical update of the climate action plan in 2024 with alignment to our greenhouse, with alignment to our general plan, I, I think we'll have to reevaluate maybe after the DHD emissions inventory as well as the completion of the Electrify San Mateo effort to understand when it might be good to prioritize a climate action plan development. I, I think one advantage to of our climate work is that we are not bound to the, you know, the strategies and measures in the climate action plan. It helps drive all of the work, but it doesn't limit the city from taking on new projects and programs as they arise.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Once again, thank you. And I just wanted to give you two pieces of, two real-life examples of why your work is doing so much good and how people are really getting to know more about it. I was downtown. I was downtown not too long before the mirrors went up in the garages. And I was at a local merchant and they were saying, you've got to do something. You're on the city council. It's really dangerous going in and out of these garages and my employees are coming in and out. We need mirrors. And I literally could go back to them the next day and say the mirrors have been installed and they were so excited. So it was wonderful timing, but once again, it was, you know, you were doing something that was very focused and targeted and what people needed. And then secondly, I am now a proud owner of a heat pump. I just went through the whole process. And while there are things outside of your control that I would certainly suggest get improved, I think what was wonderful was the whole concierge service that PCE put up. And I focused, I did this sort of the mid-tier one, but I talked to people up and down the spectrum about it. And that was really, really valuable. So the more you can get word out about that, because people who are on the edge and want to do the right thing, but oh my God, where do I begin? It really is a service that works well. So congratulations, congratulations to PCE.
Okay. Well, to close, thank you for a great presentation. I, I think we're doing great things here in San Mateo. I encourage us to continue to, especially as we, you know, repair or rebuild and replace existing buildings, make sure that we're looking at solar and green opportunities there. For example, I don't know if we're doing anything with the new library or the library that's being redone. But if so, we should make sure we're talking that up so that we show, you know, we're eating what we're cooking. And the other things obviously are to continue to focus on our green fleet expansion. I, I think there's new opportunities coming. I saw Amazon has just released that they'll be having a new truck, the pickup truck, the Slate, which will be an affordable EV hitting the market in 2026. Also at Council of Cities, we've had presentations from Rivian. Rivian is really trying to get into the government space, particularly for the medium duty utility truck. So I encourage us to continue to look at opportunities with them. We have a neighbor as well, Zooks, who is looking at last mile growth. I think it would be a great opportunity to see if we could have last mile from like the train station to people's employees, employee locations through Zooks. And getting, being a beta test site for them. I mean, it's, they're, they're already pretty ingrained in Foster City, but it would make sense that we would be another market for them to be able to beta test. And then one of the Blue Sky initiatives was, you know, to try to see about banning gas leaf blowers. So I continue to encourage us to do outreach to gardeners, specifically to try to get them to get, you know, off the gas. And anything we can do to make those moves is encouraged. So all that said, I think you're doing great work. I think the city's doing great work and I applaud you and thank you for your presentation and all your efforts.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. So we will close and move on to the last item for the night, reports and announcements. Does anyone want to start? Everybody's exhausted. No reports and announcements? Wow. I know everybody's just like, nothing?
Okay. I apologize through the mayor. I do appreciate that the mayor is extra good at reports and announcements that are helpful to promote. I think one that comes to mind at the moment is since we were just talking about our climate action plan update and Electrify San Mateo a little bit throughout the night, there is one more opportunity for the public to give input on what we're working on with regard to Electrify San Mateo before it comes back to council at our Senior Advisory Commission meeting tomorrow night. So check that out. That's all I can think of right now.
Thank you for a great call out. I know we can't agenda this, but I would like to bring up a topic that's been brought up, which is the San Mateo locks have some tenants that.
So we are aware, it's something that we are looking into with staff about, this is about overnight parking in our downtown garages. And so that is something that staff is actually going to be circling back and we can provide an update to council at a later time.
That would be fantastic. Thank you so much. Anything else? Yep, please.
Well, since, since the chief's here, I did just want to thank San Mateo Police Department for hosting the last Council of Cities meeting that we had this last Friday. And it was really cool to hear more about real-time information center and, and, you know, two or parts of the department that I hadn't seen and see a lot of, of action and technology in action. So thank you very much.
That's a great call out. And I think, again, it's not agendized, so we won't get into it. But that said, I heard a lot of interest from local cities that they might like to participate with us in these types of programs in the future. So something to think about and bring back maybe is, is there opportunities for a JPA or working together with other cities that don't have as big a team as we do that could kind of either provide equipment in their city or, and/or employees? So just something to think about. And again, thank you, chief, for that. It was a great, great presentation. People were really impressed and happy. So thank you.
No, it was great. And noted, and I think it's part of our strategy, right? Chief, we're looking at how we can provide that resource to our fellow agencies. And I know the chief has spoken about a north, mid and south. We would probably be the appropriate group for the mid area for the county. And so I know that the county chiefs have had meetings and we'll take that feedback back and I can talk further with the chief about that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Through the mayor, we're going to thank the chief for hosting the Council of Cities in our, also want to thank Martin McTaggart, who's not here, who coordinated and administered the whole thing. Hope he's having a great time at the City Clerk's Conference in Missouri.
And I hope you're being safe, Martin. I think he's watching, but he may be asleep by now. All right. With that, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Good night.